Okay, I will call to order the September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four public meeting of the Chagertown Borough Council. At this time, I will ask Mayor Werman to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which is safe, one issue, under God, and it is small, but liberty and justice for all.
That's right, that's right. I'll let you run the roll call, Councilor Khalil, Councilor McCarthy.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Is here.
Can we?
It's turned up volume.
Okay, can we be heard upon?
Like it's just turned on a little video. There we go.
Okay, there you go. My apologies. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, so, um. Councilor Bartlett, he did ask to be excused, Councilor Narva asked to be excused, Councilor Ballard did ask to be excused, Councilor Connors here, Councilor Saltesia.
Here.
Councilor Penko.
Here.
Councilor Willis here, Councilor Spindler.
Here.
Councilor Bruno.
Here.
And Councilor Marla did ask to be excused. Manager Lott, please record a pardon.
Thank you.
One more. Um, approval minutes dated August twenty eighth. Um, I need a motion submitted. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Manager Lott, please record an unanimous vote. Um. Uh, motion to approve the payroll stated September sixth and September twentieth in amount, in the amount of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred forty-one dollars and fifty-six cents and invoices totaling three hundred nine thousand, three hundred forty-four dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Manager Lott, please record an unanimous vote. Uh, this time I will open up the public comment. Yes.
Mary, thank you, Riley. Um, set my timer. Uh, I just wanted to ask, not ask, comment about the Park Mobile, which I believe is a dollar an hour. And have the fifteen cent surcharge on it. Um, that grows to every of mobiles, and I think that I think that's going to affect businesses. That's a lot of extra money to just the way it sounds like. Um, also, I would like you to think about deliveries. And before you make changes again to maybe plan and think about the consequences of those deliveries. Uh, as I understand it, UPS, FedEx, and Amazon and Giant delivery people are being told that they cannot park, double park or park for everybody, that the borough wants them parking a loading zone and then walk to their destination. Um, none of those businesses need a need or nothing. And all they have to do is put up lockers. And none of you are going to get delivered to your door. Um, these guys work on time. I've known delivery people for fifty years. I've worked with them. They can't go home sometimes until they're fully empty. And right now they're laughing because they know you cannot dick them. Do what you want them to do, and you can write tickets for them. And UPS and FedEx get so many tickets. And then it's goodbye Jenkentown, we're going to lockers. Okay, so please think about the ramifications before you make the drastic change. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
I'd like to make my own.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I just think, uh, Mary Jane, that parking is still fifty cents an hour. And so the in, the parking fee didn't increase. Uh, there's a fifty cents transaction fee. So I just want to say, I just used it this evening because I parked outside, so I'm paying for two hours of parking and it's costing me a dog fit.
I'm, I'm sorry, I thought it's some of the places in this here. Yeah, it's a dollar an hour when I saw it.
Maybe if you're in Glen Side or, yes, Chuck, Chum Ham.
You're.
What did it say on West Avenue?
A dollar an hour on one, on one of the meters, because uh, I saw one one and her baby truck trying to figure out what she was supposed to be doing, which is a good thing, she ever found. Where she put, where's the put a dollar in there? That's what it said. It's the meter.
On West Avenue. Yeah, in front of where?
David Orange.
Between the first officer and David Orange. Look at that.
And, and I, I kind of remember a couple of months ago that she was saying that eventually everything was going to go to a dollar. But from what, as I understand it, that through this fee or whatever, um, the meter itself didn't say that. There was a thing across it that said that, some kind of.
We'll sign it or something. Yes, okay, thank you.
Manager Lott, are you aware of any, um, public comment by way of social media or, uh, email?
I have no email or Zoom. You can take your whole.
I don't see any hands up on Zoom. Okay.
All right.
Uh, yes.
All right, Mayor Yorick, I wanted to add one to Mary Jane's comment. Um, I think I've read on different places that in the example that you just gave, Councilman, um, if you didn't need to spend the two hours or if you have a certain quantity out, you can go on and treat, say, I'm done parking. And some of that money would be refunded to your account.
Yes.
So, um, maybe that would be something that would be helpful that when this whole thing is probably for good that were bold, italicized and highlighted. That that it might take some of the sting out of um, the reaction that's still come. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah, we can put like a link to learn about Park Mobile.
Okay, I'll move on to reports, um, engineer, oh. For, I can move on to reports. I just want to note that, um, we did have an executive session, um, to discuss potential litigation and personnel. I will now move on to the engineer's report. Uh, Mark Vickerton, uh, is the best time for that.
Yes, uh, good evening. Um, our report's been filed. I can, I can take, uh, any questions on it. Um, at this time, just the two, three things I wanted to give you an update on. Uh, one, we're going to be, um, assisting with the opening of the CDPG, um, ADA ramps, um, project, uh, that's this tragic, assuming that we get bids, which I expect we will. Um. The other one's a little, little, uh, not not great news, um, but I think we've, we have a resolution and a path forward, so. Um, and that, so the, um, we ran into a bit of a snafu with the paving projects, um. As you may be aware, um, during the originally scheduled bid opening, no bids were received. We followed a procedure that's been used dozens of times, if not more, um, to extend it and, uh, uh, I guess Pendot had a different, different interpretation of, you know, administratively how you were allowed to proceed with extending the bids. Um, so we were presented with two options. One was to rebid the project. Two was to proceed with a solicitor review on our ends, you know, per due to our findings and then be subjected to a Pendot solicitor review. Um, up in Herford Central Office, which would take likely a couple of six weeks to, to move forward with. Um. That said, um, the shortest path to getting the project back out on the street and getting it done and hopefully getting it done this year. Uh, we just could have proceeded with the rebid right now with the minimum time period. Um, so um, I guess we're, uh, requesting authorization to rebid from council this evening. Uh, we could, once we, if we got that, um, we'll put a advertisement together and, you know, update the, the dates, but it should be able to be rebid within two weeks. And so we'd be looking to bring clear recommendation to award um, back to council either for the October committee meeting or the October, uh, council meeting.
It's not too late to start cementing.
Um, so it would be pushing us right up against the period. Now there is, um, uh, we are entitled to request an extension of the paving period, which the cutoff is October thirty first. Um. It wouldn't give us a waiver from, you know, weather conditions, right? So if there's snow, if it's cold, you know, that doesn't give us a waiver for that, but it would, we could request a waiver. It happens frequently. Um, so that's, that's our best chance of, of getting it done, um, this year, um.
We're very concerned with the paving project.
It was on, well, not from Washington to, um, Greenwood, Green, thank you.
Thank you.
And as part of that motion, we would want council to authorize us to ask for the extension of time from Pendot, which is normally October thirty first to pay. As long as the day they're painting is forty degrees or better, they can fully uh, with the extension from Pendot. So we get the motion to advertise, we're asking that that motion also means that we submit for the extension of the payday. It's all duly scheduled.
Right.
They call it the payday schedule.
Right.
Three.
Um, and there is, there's one, there's one more piece of that also, um, the, uh, the RCO. Um, we'd re- request a waiver for the waiting period from the RCO, not, yeah, we would still comply with it, but just a waiver on the waiting period.
So this is the reason why you didn't get in this the first time around?
You know, um. I'm gonna have to get back to you with why we didn't get bids the first time, but we did get bids and we extended it, and I think it was, uh, was a one week extension.
I'm not sure the time period, but we had fair bids the second time.
Right.
Well, we did put a lot of calls out and let people know that it was out bid.
Okay, yeah, I'm, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
No reason to do the same thing.
And end up with no bids. No, I, we would, we would probably do, you know, the more aggressive approach that was, that was done the second time around.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Um.
Jane, do we need to be have a motion for that?
I know, I believe.
It's on the. It's on your agenda, your action item, neither.
Yeah.
And I was making notes, so should the council member need a recommended motion, I can tell.
Um. Public Works Department Foreman Riggins is not here, but I'm sure Manager Lott will tie it into that manager's report, um, solicitor's report, uh, Mr. Hitchens.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Solicitor's Office continues to provide legal services on an as needed and as requested basis. Additionally, I want to make a formal announcement that one of my items that is going to be a priority is looking at the draft ordinance uh, that the planning commission has repeatedly and politely asked that I take a look at with regard to short term rentals. The delay has been mine and mine alone, so I apologize. So if anybody's getting yelled at about it, say, nope, it's Patrick's fault. Uh, it's all my, so, yeah, thank you.
Uh, Police Chief's report, uh, Chief Scott, uh, is, um, on a, on a vacation from town this week, so, um, he has, uh, been excused. Um, so I will move.
I'm just. You missed giving the mayor.
It's all right. The manager's board.
Thank you, President Connors. Um, I do have a few items tonight. Um. First, um, I did a wedding for a couple in the town square a couple of weekends ago, which was nice. Um. I did mean to ask Councilor Bartonet while he was here before he left about the chili cookoff and pumpkin drop, which I haven't heard a date yet. I would imagine it's going to probably be November second or the ninth. Um, so hopefully, um, we'll get that information out to the community. Um, another reminder or timeline is to remember to register to vote by October twenty first.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I don't know if we're going to talk much about it, but we did have the meeting to talk about parking. Um, and we will also have another meeting to talk specifically about resident permit parking. So we'll be communicating that out to the public as well. Um, and lastly, as President Connors mentioned, Chief Scott is on a well-deserved vacation. Um, hopefully he is relaxing. Um, he works tirelessly for our community. Um, he's doing a tremendous job and I, and I think we appreciate him.
I second that. I guess so. Yeah. Hiring him was, yeah, hiring him was one of our best decisions, so great job, great, enjoy your vacation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, manager's report, manager Lott.
So there's a report in your packet for me. It's kind of, kind of brief this month. We are working with Edmunds Go Tech. And we've made that decision to, to move to the financial improved software program in two thousand and twenty-five, which means that we have to start the transition now. Uh, and part of that is fitting it into the two thousand and twenty-five budget, which is probably the hardest part of the transition. Uh, but we are working on that. The, uh, I met with Abington Township Assistant Manager to discuss our multi-municipal grants. We do have matching funds that are upcoming, uh, for the connections management or connections plan on Washington Lane, which is coming along, and I've heard some nice compliments of the work over there, and now that they're starting to button it up. On the Jenkentown side, they're still working in Abington. And they need to complete it by the end of the year, so um, what they're working on, so, uh, hopefully they'll be tightening that up as well. They have decided to do the handicap ramp that they were not going to do at Greenwood and Washington on the southeast corner. Um, it was actually destroyed in construction, so they didn't really have a choice but to do it. Uh, we did have a pre-bid meeting for the CEBG ADA ramp on the east side of town. There's twenty-two ramps being put in. And that project is out to bid. Uh, Mark, you know the date that they opened that by any chance this Friday? This Friday? Yes. Great, so hopefully we'll get some bids on that and get that project moving. Uh, the county who came down for the pre-bid meeting and Mark was here that went on last Friday. We had a community playground meeting at the school district. The, uh, playground committee that, that's made up of, of residents and, and a group that originally built the playground and has maintained it throughout the years. They, they came, the building inspector was there. Chief Lynch, uh, or Fire Marshal Lynch was there. The school district had their people there. And they've obtained a structural engineer report of the playground and what repairs need to be made. The school district is a, is going to pay for the repairs. They have a contractor lined up. And, um, after repairs are made, Canoni is going to do a, send in a certified playground inspector to make sure that everything's up to par and safe for the children before it's reopened. Also in the meeting, we agreed to meet again. But in the meeting, um, they started talking about the future of the playground and what will be needed for upkeep and fundraising uh, to keep that, that structure in place there. We had a couple new businesses come in, a nursing school, an adult nursing school moved into, uh, or was approved to move into one oh one Greenwood. One oh one West Avenue, I apologize. Uh, it's a nice business. They're over in Windcoat and they've grown too much for their structure. And they were actually considering buying the building, but they're going to take up a floor and see how things work out. It has plenty of parking for them. Uh. Park Mobile, I think. I think we briefly talked about that. We're still we had the parking meeting, the community parking meeting, which went very well, a lot of good ideas. We agreed to meet again and, uh, work on the parking permit situation. Uh, we met for a little over two hours. And we touched on the parking permit, but it was obvious that there's a lot more to discuss and things to work out uh, that we'll be working on, and we're going to have, we're going to set up another public meeting to work through that. Council had approved the, uh, sale of some surplus borough equipment. There's a couple trucks and a trailer have been sold on that municipal bid website. We, we earned, uh, twenty thousand dollars in bids. Uh, that was brought in as revenue. And though that equipment has been picked up, with the exception of the trailer, we're waiting for a title to come in. The title, it was a little snafu with the title. It's a police explorer is still up for bid, so that is not figured into that. Uh, I can answer any questions that you may have. I really don't have a public works update for you. He gave his report last week and I wasn't left one tonight. But I, I could try to answer any questions.
For, you know, really, I, I don't know what difference between what Public Works doing, J E A C and the community, but I mean, really the trash, I, I really seem to try to, she great job.
I'll pass the word to them. The one thing I will mention is curbside yard waste. Next week will be done on Monday instead of Tuesday because the entire public works is going to, uh, go to training for, uh, winter maintenance of the roads and use some salt and brine.
Briney, my favorite.
More to roll.
I, I would just like to say, Manager Lott, um, please extend our thanks to you and to Foreman Riggins for, um, doing that municipal bid process and getting rid of the outdated equipment and gaining some revenue for the boroughs. I really appreciate it.
Pass it on to him.
It's not nothing, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I will move on to the order of business. Um. Number one. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee, um, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three appointing the finance director and borough manager as Jenkentown Borough delegates to the N C T C C.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, manager Lott, please record a unanimous vote. Uh, I will fill in for Councilor Ballard. Um, the two thousand and twenty-five public budget workshop meeting schedule. I make a motion to publicly advertise the two thousand and twenty-five public budget workshop meeting schedule.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions?
The community is welcome. It's very informative.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Manager Lott, please record an unanimous vote. Uh. Two thousand and twenty-five minimum mun- municipal obligation pension plan contributions. I make a motion to approve the MMO pension plan contributions for two thousand and twenty-five in the amounts of police, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and non-uniform forty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions?
I just want to say, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, um, we are to be commended for having fully funded, um, uh, pension plans. Nice job.
Pension plan is in, in good shape. I mean, it goes up and down with the market.
Yeah.
It's in good shape.
Well, we need our obligations each year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Manager Lott, please record the unanimous vote. Um. Act forty-nine of two thousand and twenty-four police pension credit for prior service. I don't have language.
That is because we're, uh, we needed it on the agenda to bring it to your attention. We're asking you to vote on it next month when we provide the, the remainder of the information. Uh, we're only a couple documents away from having everything in your hand, but we're asking that you read everything that was provided. This act was uh, sworn in by the governor. And the municipalities have to choose whether to adopt it or not. There's a, a chart in there on how it would affect our pension. The borough's pension and what the number of officers that would participate in it and how, uh, financially the borough is responsible for a portion, the offices are responsible for a portion. There's still, um, we still don't know. There might be one or two officers added to that list. But we think that what you have is complete. Um, and we should be able to bring the rest of the information. There's an officer that might want to participate in it at the end of October, so we definitely will bring it for a vote in October too. But if you have any questions, we could get it answered by Conrad Siegel. That's our actuary. But he did a, an actuarial study that's provided to you in the packets. If you want to look through.
Right.
I would suggest making a motion to table this matter of October.
Okay, I make a motion to tack to, I make a motion to table, uh, number four on the agenda until October. Second, I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Manager Lott, please record unanimous vote, uh, number five, Councilor Saltesia.
Okay. Borough code one seventy-two dash thirty-six suspension of provisions, erection of signs. I make a motion to request, uh, to rest on the chief of police to temporarily suspend the provision of chapter one seventy-two dash twenty-six. Designation of loading zones on West Avenue and erect temporary twenty-minute parking signage in these locations. That's second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Manager Lott, please record a unanimous vote. Uh, go ahead.
Um, Jenkentown Fire Department Fire Chief Command Vehicle. I make a motion to authorize the borough manager to continue to work with the fire, with the borough fire chief to finalize quotes and proceed with the retrofit and paint of the Ford Explorer Intersector. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? Uh, all in favor? And any opposed? Uh, manager Lott, please record an unanimous vote.
Thanks. I really think that's going to be a, a really great addition to the borough. Really great to the, uh, fire chief.
Is it a different one than the one we were trying to sell?
It would have been gone up for sale next. It's still in commission. We just took it out. No, it's not the one for sale.
Not the one for sale. Okay, that's, yeah. Um. Jenkentown Fire Department Engine ninety-six Spartan pumper. I make a motion to authorize Borough Fire Chief Lynch to an, obtain an estimate of repairs. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, manager Lott, please record unanimous vote.
Sure, I'm on a roll. Parking management, Park Mobile coin payment option. I make a motion to authorize the borough administration to move forward with the transition from on-street coin-operated parking meters to electronic payment as part of the upgrade and modernization of the borough parking payment system. Um, expected completion December two thousand and twenty-four. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions?
I just wanted to make the comment that, um, I know that this does, switching to something like this that's fully mobile and automated does pose challenges for some people, and I really think that, um, and it, it, for me, it was kind of like a hard thing to accept. I will say that for a long, long time, I kept saying that it was not really fair to some communities, um, some populations of people. But, um, I really, through all the work that everyone did, um, kind of researching the impact of the borough of not making this change, um, I think that it really isn't the best interest. And I move forward because.
Do good things? Or is that?
Yeah, I think the banks actually, I mean, it's something that we've been thinking about, and I think absolutely true. The banks did force our hands. And I don't think it makes sense to spend fast staff time rolling quarters.
And also some of the meters are in bad repair.
Yes.
So you have to replace them anyway.
And no longer being new ones are no longer being made, so many reasons.
Okay, number nine, Councilor Pen.
Wait, we didn't know.
We did, no, we did, and that, and also, no, that conversation was quite sad to know.
Okay. It's just didn't. We did it. Yeah, why?
Roll, roll last the table. Second. Uh, right, are there any comments?
We made our comment.
On.
Yeah.
Manager Lott, please record unanimous. So that is.
Yeah.
Uh, number nine.
I'm gonna take a stab at this. So, um, I move that we re-advertise the road paving project contract number twenty-four dash oh six. And that we include in our, do I have to do it separately to wait?
No, I would, I had it written. I would do all together. So I would suggest a motion to authorize the re-advertising of the two thousand and twenty-four road paving project to request an extension of the paving time from Pendot and to waive the RCO waiting period for the rebid.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Uh, are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, manager Lott, please record, record a unanimous vote. That does it for the order of business. I will now, now open it up to new business and discussion.
Don't we, we're gonna ask for a certain session, depending on the engagement, please.
Could be more specific. Can you be more specific?
Just litigation.
So you'd like to have an executive session at the conclusion of the meeting to discuss matters of.
Litigation.
Litigation. That's up to you, Mr. President. Um, obviously it doesn't require a vote, um, but.
Well, I, I think, I think we're good.
Uh, please. Please.
Okay, but ten minutes.
Ten minutes is all I have.
Okay, all right.
So we're announcing that we're going to have another executive session on matters of litigation at the conclusion of this meeting for only ten minutes, or thereabouts.
Yes.
Hopefully less.
Yes. Really. Um. Is there any new business and discussion? Okay, um, so, uh, motion to adjourn.
So, second. Oh, no, wait, you don't, we motion to possess, I think, right?
Nope, we're gonna adjourn. Yep, this way everybody can go home and not have to wait for her to come back to see you adjourn, like they want to hang.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.